I know, I'm just.
I rushed, I rushed a committee of adjustment from the hayfield. If I could have avoided this, I would have.
You look great.
Absolutely. With that, it is six fifty-eight and I believe all members of council are now here. And one, two, three, four, five, six. Ms. Parks is here.
And just one second, your worship told we're live here. It'll take us.
To the clerk, I take it this is an example of watching a pot trying to boil?
Yes. We are streaming now, your worship. We're good to go.
Thank you very much. With that, it is now seven PM. I will call the meeting of the committee of the whole for this Monday, June the seventh to order. And we had no closed session today. We had originally scheduled this for six thirty, but we did have a committee of adjustment meeting prior to this. And so we were a little delayed in getting started. As I say, we are now called to order. This is a meeting of council held virtually. But all of the same procedures of council, rules of procedure, code of conduct, and the municipal act apply as usual. If any member of council loses their connection or has technical difficulties, we will pause for a moment to try to allow them to reconnect. But assuming that we have quorum, we will attempt to continue on with the meeting. And with that, we have the call to order. We have an agenda before us. Are there any edits to the agenda as presented? No, then I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. I'll take this councillor Parks, seconded by councillor Townen. And any comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Is there any disclosure of beginning or interest in the general nature thereof? I'm seeing none. At this time, so we shall move to staff reports. We go to item four point one, the council ad hoc grant donation request policy update. We have a report before us from the clerk. Director of Business Services, Corporate Services, sorry. Does the clerk have anything to add to this report at this time? Or is this Mr. Dickies?
It's Mr. Dickies.
I'm sorry. I forget the titles right. My apologies, Mr. Dickie. Thank you for the report. And do you have anything to add to this report at this time?
Good evening through you, mayor. Now, just briefly, this was one of those motions that came out of the recent discussion on around the renewable energy. Grant fund policy that council did. So we were asked to take a look at, this is an existing policy that finance did about five years ago. As a way to kind of administer and provide some guidance for low dollar requests at the time. So. Council didn't give it, didn't get a lot of direction in terms of what they wanted to do with it, except look at potentially. How to apply for it, how to report out on it. So, so we're open for your recommendations. So. As noted in the report, what we've done is we have added a very brief application form. And, and we have made it a requirement for these, these small. Applicants that do receive funds to do some kind of report back to council. Now, we didn't, we didn't draft a formal reporting template or anything. At this point, that council still wishes we could do something like that. So it's fairly, we've kept it fairly simple. We've kept it in place. We've assumed council wants. Keep something in place at this point and tell directed otherwise. Or this would be for smaller dollar items that. Either that missed the deadlines for the regular. Energy program, grant program. Or that we are otherwise, you know, someone wants to come to council for requests. So. So we've, I mean, a few changes to roll one, but open to, open to suggestions from council for any further modifications.
Thank you, Mr. Dickie. I turn to council. This is committee of the whole is open for discussion. Within reasonable decorum. So does anyone have any questions or ideas to add to this topic? I'll start with councillor Porter.
Yeah, is this, is that a new requirement that people report back? Demonstrating the impact of the donation. I don't recall seeing any reports come back for, especially for such a small amount.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's, yes, it is something we proposed in this, in this updated draft. It wasn't there in the original, in the previous policy.
Other questions? Did you have anything further, councillor Porter? Okay, I think I saw deputy mayor's hand as well.
Yes, I just have one. Very, very minor suggestion. And then just a comment. On page six, item seven at the top of the page where the very last, right at the end of the. Item seven, it says requests that are under the caps indicated. I would suggest that maybe caps be changed to the word limits or something like that. Just make it a little more formal. And the only other thing I had is just to thank staff for doing this. I. I like the idea. I know it's a very small dollar value typically with these. So keeping it simple was great. And, but I, I do like to be able to have a reporting back. It kind of, it, it, it adds transparency to, even though it's small dollar values, it does add transparency. To spending, which is under council's control. And also. It is, does allow us to be able to showcase items that have been successful and. You know, was, was a benefit to the community, whether at large or even just localized. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Nobody? And, and we do have a recommendation before us. And is anyone willing, wishing to make a motion at this time? Deputy?
To move to receive and adopt the recommendation, the pass is amended.
And thank you, seconded by councillor Porter. And mover, any comment? Second or any comment? Anyone else? Seeing no hands. Then I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We move to item four point two, the backyard hand draft by law follow up. We have a report before us. This one is from the director and clerk. Clerk, do you have anything to add to this report at this time?
I was just going to do a couple of highlights on it. For the report, I believe it's all the information's included in the report. And sorry, I'm not going to look at my screen because I've got notes on my other side. So I apologize that it makes it look like I'm not looking at you. So the direction was received to look at licensing select urban areas such as Bath, Odessa, Amherst View. And potentially hamlets that have small lots. We looked at a review or we reviewed two bylaws that have similar restrictions. That are affecting more of the urban areas. And the two that we looked at were the noise and the ATV bylaw. They're currently in existence. They do have under the schedules. Maped areas of where it's applying to. And we could look at something similar. On this, once we were clear as to what exactly would constitute a hamlet, what would. You know, it's, it's tough to pick and choose areas without having, having that a little bit more delineated. In our minds. Some of the challenges with. This is of course, the fact that when it isn't township wide. When there are complaints, it still allows that there will be areas that would fall outside of the enforcement side of things. So we would still be running or the possibility is there that we would still be running into problems of enforcing. Any area that was outside of the licensed area, if that makes sense. Um. Let me just go through. One of the ones that we did look at was the ATV bylaw, I believe, and I wasn't here for that one, but I believe there was. Odessa was taken out of it. We are getting complaints in regards to ATVs in that. So it just kind of reiterates where it's hard if it's not. Townshipwide of being able to do some of those, those enforcement issues. And the other one, so an alternative solution was considered in consultation with the planning division and, and I believe it was, went through our. Our township, township solicitor as well, which was to include an option for property owners that have two or. Whatever acres or more to be permitted to apply for an exemption of up to eighteen hens under section four point one of the bylaw. Going this route would require a housekeeping amendment to the zoning bylaw. As the licensing bylaw can't conflict with the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw takes precedence over any licensing bylaw. So those are just kind of a couple of highlights of the report and open for questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, your thoughts? And I'll go to councillor Porter.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions right yet, but I do have a couple of comments. I think it's really important that we recognize the diversity of our municipality. You know, we, we certainly should not be painting the whole municipality with the same brush. And by having a township wide. Bylaw that affects everybody equally is not respecting or recognizing that diversity. To me, you can't treat somewhere like Amherst View in, for certain things, the same as you would treat an area off of Switzerville Road. They're just completely different and they have different needs. They have different requirements and they have different styles of living. So I think although, you know, I understand the clerk's concern that. It is a little bit more difficult to enforce and, and monitor. It is still important that we take and make that extra effort to recognize that. We do have complete different areas within our municipality. You know, we're not, we're not a city that has all urban areas or, or we are. Pretty diverse in our geographic and our, and our type of people that live in our municipality. So to me, I'll reiterate, I think it's really important that we recognize that and respect that and try and, you know. Try and meet the needs of the different areas of our, of our township. Having said all that. I, I do like. The recommendation number two, I, I think it, it, it does speak to that need. The idea when this first came to fruition a couple of years ago was sort of brought up by somebody that lived in Odessa. That did. You know, have a neighbor close by and they're having a rat problem and they blamed it on the chickens in the neighbor's backyard. And. That's sort of what propelled this forward to look at that, to see what we could do. But I, but I do think that the option that you provided number two would. Would, you know, respect the people out in the rural areas and still protect the people in urban areas from having neighbors that. Keep livestock in a postcard backyard. So. Now, I do want to comment on, on the, the one comment that you did, that the clerk did make about the ATV. Rule at the time that that was passed, there wasn't the, the development that there is in Odessa. So as our municipality grows and as it changes, I agree that we do have to make changes to the bylaws to continue to accommodate all of our residents. Both urban and rural. So I am glad to see that, that coming back to council for a review.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Other comments or questions? Anyone? There's no, I'll go to the deputy.
Yeah, I just have a comment. This, I guess when we went down, started down this path, I didn't envision the bylaw covering the whole township. Like councillor Porter said, we're very diverse and. I guess in my mind, I was thinking if somebody's on a septic in a well, the lot's probably big enough to have chickens. So. It wouldn't be a, and usually your neighbors are a little further away. So property cared for, there wouldn't be any impact. But. I, I'm coming around to the point where I can let, no. The second option is probably the best to be able, because I also realize that we do need some way of controlling. You know, inappropriate use in the lots. In, in the built up areas. So in the very small lots and things like that, I can see where it would become a real problem for neighbors. If, especially if the hens weren't being cared for properly. So we do have to have a method of being able to go in and, and, and check and, and make sure it's being done properly. So I'm kind of weighing the two options. I want to keep. I, I, as councillor Porter said, there is a lot of diversity and we have to acknowledge that. While still being able to make it so that we can take care of the, the entire township and. Recommendation number two, I think. I think we'll, I'm, I'm coming around to where I think that will do it.
Thank you, deputy. Any other comments from council? See no hands? Is anyone willing to put forward a motion? I note that the recommendation does contain a couple of oars. I'll go to councillor Porter.
I'll move to receive the report and adopt recommendation to. And presume that, and have that. Proposed housekeeping zoning bylaw amendments come back to council.
I'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second or for that? And I'll take councillor Parks. And mover, any comments?
No, nothing, nothing more than what I've already said.
Thank you. Second or comment?
All right. Yes, I would agree with what councillor Porter has said. I think this is a good option and. The, the deputy is also, I give that sentiment too. So I think that's a good option for the township.
Thank you. Anyone else have commented this time? Seeing none. At this time, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And thank you to the clerk for getting us through that. And we move to item four point three, the renewable energy vibrancy application review committee, terms of reference. And we have a draft before us. And who will be speaking to this from staff?
I will be your worship and it does not appear like the report. Not attached to the. To the agenda. I'm sorry, there was a report. Let me just pull that up because then I can speak to it.
The red line draft and appointment policy.
Yeah. So the red line draft, what went through there was just to go through the document to, sorry. To try and incorporate the, any of the actions that council had asked for, such as the breaking, or having the two committees. Also, the membership. Sorry, if you want to talk about the red line, I am just going to pull up this other report and I apologize. Sorry. Where's one I want to find it? It's evading me. There we go. Sorry. Okay, sorry, I can, I can speak to it. So the purpose of the report was to, is to present a draft term to reference for an application review committee. As was presented in report SR seventeen thirty-seven, which talked about the draft and amended renewable energy vibrancy policy. And resolution COW twenty twenty-one thirty-nine. Which was on May third. So the purpose of the report was to present the information that was outlined in resolution twenty. Twenty-one thirty-nine, that two new committees be formed, one representing the island and the second representing the rest of the township to receive and evaluate applications. And further mandated to provide recommendations to council, not only on the applications, but on the details of the policy. The report, and I will attach this report and send it out to all of council, but the policy. That was presented speaks to the citizen appointment policy, which council had adopted as part of the procedural bylaw. So it's, and the red line revisions that are showing on the attachment of the agenda. Is basically the suggestion is from version zero one to version zero two, is changing the role of the review committee to receive the applications. As the next bullet speaks to evaluating them. So I think on the first one, it said to review them. And because that's under the second bullet, we just amended or suggesting to amend that first section to say that it's to receive them. And then we provided a bit more clarification by separating the recommendation reports to reflect the one would be that. One of the reports is how the grant funds are to be allocated. And the second is to review and make recommendations. Recommendations of any changes to the grant policy. So it was just to make it clear on those two distinctions that council had put under the resolution. Section one point zero provides for the composition of the committee and the draft document proposes one overarching terms of reference for the review committee. And then into two subcommittees. So the, the proposal is that there's an overarching terms of reference that speaks to the committees. And the mandate and then the subcommittees and they could create additional. Items as if they wish that would, that they could then submit to council under the review part to add to their sections if they wanted to add. Additional components to, to their, to their subcommittees. Or alternately, of course, we could create the two individual policies and, and wait. Like change them on that part of it. Section one point one outlines that the committee members will be selected by using evaluation criteria. The criteria should be outlined in the terms of reference. And the following guidelines are included as part of the citizen appointment policy, which basically speaks to the ability to perform the duties. Including any complimentary skills and or competencies, areas of specialization where required experience or community service. These could be things such as has, you know, financial background, has legal background, community or. Experience in regards to. Committees, that type of thing. So that would be something that council would set out as to what they want in there as, as. Part of the, of the evaluation criteria. Do you want to go through these, your worship, like finish and then go through, or do you want to kind of do them one?
Well, I would suggest that this is committed to the whole. It is a little bit more casual. And at any time, if there is a member of the council that wishes to. Add a comment on a particular line as you're going through it or a question, I encourage you guys to, the council to. Indicate that to me and, and otherwise I'll let the clerk continue. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so council as a whole will serve as a nominating panel with respect to all advisory committees. And that again is under section three point five of the. Current citizen appointment policy. So it's very similar to how we do committees now is the applications are brought in. The list is, is provided to council. They can be reviewed under closed session. Basically because of the personal information that's provided and then reporting out would be of, of the. Who is suggested to be on to the, on to the committees. As section five point three again of the policy outlines remuneration of the members. And generally, the members are served on a voluntary basis and do not receive any form of remuneration. Section one point seven of the terms of reference or the draft terms of reference as they're provided. Does have it that there's no remuneration, that it is voluntary. If that's to change and council wants to put. Remuneration section, then we would include that in the terms of reference as well. And then it would be budgeted going forward. Section six point zero, reports to council. Basically, all applications which are supported or not supported shall be included in the report as per item seven. So that was again, just to make sure that that was clear, that all applications. Whether they're, whether the, the committee supports them or not, would form part of the report, overall report coming back to council. And just operational considerations, no alternatives were being presented as the report was prepared. Based on the direction provided by council through the resolution. So those were kind of the highlights of what the draft terms were prepared based on. And I guess we're just looking for any direction as to changes or clarity on, on the, on the terms.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, do we have comments or questions or ideas with regard to the terms of reference for the, the review committees? I'm going to councillor Porter.
And overall, looks really good. Did a great job taking our comments into account. The only question I have is the subcommittees, they composed of six members and. Just wondering if maybe the wording should be up to six members in case we can't get six members. And as well up to, for ward two and three, up to two council members. Or could be put in there. And I don't know if this is proper to do, but we put it there up to two council members or their delegates. Question, I guess, more than a comment.
That's to the clerk. Your comment on that?
Yes, we can, we can have alternate as if you wish. I mean, we could incorporate some kind of wording in there. Definitely we can change to up to six members. I believe it was for the ward one, it was up to six with. The one ward one council member. And then up to five public and for ward two, three was up to four with two council members. But. Again, and any change on that, if, if you didn't have enough members, public members applying for it. Council can change the terms as to much what happened before, where I think there was two council members that was supposed to be on the. Policy part of it. And, and then it was changed to put it to four public members, I believe it was.
Okay, councillor Porter, anything further? Okay, council porter, anything further? Anyone else? Don't go to the deputy.
I just have a few suggestions and they're not in the highlighted items there in, in the others that I saw when we were going, when I was reading through. One point three, it has additional members. And I was thinking, should we add on the end of that up to the current, up to the committee limits as per one point zero? That way it's clear that we're not enlarging the committees, we're just, it would be for replacement or enhancement if we didn't receive enough applications. And then one point five. I believe we have a policy now that. The chair would be the council member and if there's two council members, it would be the most senior and. This part I'm not sure of, but I thought it also had that if there were two members. Then the other council member would be the, the vice chair, but the vice chair, I'm not sure of, but I. I believe the two policies would be contradicting each other if we left it that it was voted. At the beginning of the term. There was one other one, oh, four point one. Can't get that thing to move out of the way. There we go. Oh, it says if members miss three meetings, up above it says they'll have at least two meetings. So. Instead of going by the number of meetings, maybe we should look at a percentage or something. If we only have two meetings, somebody could not show up for four years and still be acceptable. So I mean, I'm just throwing out there, like if they miss fifty percent, like if there's two meetings a year, hopefully they can at least make one of them. And if there was more than the percentage would still work.
Okay. That's all. Okay. Thank you, deputy. Anyone else have comments on these? We've got some wording changes presented by council porter and deputy mayor. Is there any comment on any of those, any disagreement, any suggestions or alterations on any of the, either the alterations presented by the clerk or by the, the two members? I'll go to council parks.
Thank you. I would just suggest possibly leaving in one point five as it is. There might be other committee members and I don't know if this is in contravention to our current policies, but. There might be some people that might serve better as the. Sorry. The chair of those or the vice chair as opposed to a council member, just if they have experienced a down not for profit. So that was just my suggestion.
Thank you. I was going to make comment on that item as well. If I'm recalling correctly, the current policy was specific to a particular committee that we decided that. The chair would be the, the council member. And I think we have done that on, on more than one committee, but I, I'm not sure and I have to refer to the clerk. If that is a universal policy for all committees at this point to have the member of council sitting as the chair. To the clerk.
Have to look at that, you're as well, your worship. I'm not sure that it's written or whether it was just a unwritten. Rule that council has been following since the last appointment. I'll have to look at that to see if, if we do have an existing policy that, that specifies that it is council that becomes chair and vice chair.
I understand from the deputy mayor's comments that he was concerned with, with consistency in policy more than, than with making a selection as to who the chair would be in advance. Reflecting on council parks comments. Can I assume members of council that you're comfortable with the idea that this, that these committees be chaired by whomever the chair, the committee chooses? If, as long as that's not a violation of our other policies. I'm not seeing any objections to that. So for providing direction to staff on how to make amendments to this, I think that one's clear. Any other comments with regards to this? And deputy, go ahead.
Oh, are we still on that topic of the chair?
And or anything's open.
Okay, I was just going to comment on which one was it now? The. Oh, the ward two, three committee. I think the intent when, when the motion was made that there would be two council members on it. So I would like to see that intent carried through. Into the policy. It would still have the same number of members. It would just be a reorganization of, of repositioning from what, rather than have more. Residents, if the intent was to have two council members, I'd like to see us carry that forward. And up to the six mem- member or the other members at large. It makes sense that if we don't get enough applications, then the committee still has to move ahead with less numbers.
Thank you. I saw councillor Booterik's hand. Go ahead.
Originally in the town, when I spoke to this a month ago, it was to have two council members on this and I, I also with the deputy would like to stick with that.
Thank you. Other comments? This would be to provide direction to staff to provide these amendments and edits and bring it back. Bring it back to council for final approval. Any other edits, comments? Seeing none, so can I get a motion to. Return to staff as out to the clerk, go ahead.
So just on the others in regards to the remuneration, it's going to be as is and in regards to the. Evaluation criteria, do you want, similar to what I had said, basically that you, you'd be, or not preference, but. You'd be looking or, or asking for people with financial or legal or. Not, non-for-profit experience as part of the application process?
And, and just for clarity, we would ask for that information and it may sway council in its, in its nomination process. But council would not be bound by any particular criteria CPA doesn't win out over somebody with bookkeeping as an example. Okay, and is council clear on that and is that your intention? Deputy, go ahead.
Um, I guess I'm going to go against the grain a little bit again. There's. I, I like that idea. The only thing is, is it could, there could be a lot of people that feel disqualified before they even apply. And what I'm thinking is, I'm like, when I'm looking around the township, a lot of the organizations, a lot of the ideas, a lot of the actions that's being taken in. Other organizations, the leaders aren't. CPAs, they aren't, like some of them are like professional and everything, but you look around and how many of them are led by, you know. I don't know, well, farmers, farmers' wives, just community members, people that. And they do a really good job because their hearts are in the right spot. They have a knowledge of the area. Like for me, the biggest thing is. Their. Knowledge of the area and what would benefit the community and. Then, I mean, if, if they're already on other committees, not township committees even, but other committees that. Would show that they've got a heart for it and. Their intent would be in the right place to further the, the community. For me, that kind of speaks louder than. Whether you have a degree or letters behind your name or. A professional title. That's just my thoughts.
Council porter, go ahead.
And I hundred percent wholeheartedly agree with the deputy mayor's comments and I don't think we should be. Saying that preference will be given to those applicants that possess this type of parameter or, or criteria. I think we should leave it wide open and I think that it is, should be based on people that live in the community and have a passion for our community and, and. And those will show themselves who have. Done work within our communities or who have, who have been members of other committees and that type of thing. So. I agree, we don't want to be discouraging people if they don't have letters or a professional designation of, of some sort.
Okay, we'll remove that from the, from the terms.
Thank you. Again, unless there's a concern with, with that idea, I think the clerk has her direction. I would tend to agree. I also would remind everyone that we don't always have a lot of people applying for these. So we do not want to discourage from, from getting involved, certainly. Any other sections within the entire document? Any other comments? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve the, the, or to provide direction to, to staff to complete the drafting? Council porter, so moved. Thank you. Do I have a second or? Councillor Gordon, thank you. Mover, any comment? Second or any comment? Anyone else have comment? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. With that, we come to the end of our agenda. Unless there's anything else for councillor town and you was just a comment?
I do. I thought we had a sort of. A, a members privilege section or something like that at the end, but it was actually a follow-up motion to, to the previous motion, if I may.
Follow-up motion would be appropriate.
Okay. I, I would, I would move that committee of the whole recommend to council to request staff to prepare a public information session. On recent changes to the renewable energy vibrancy policy and relevant committees. As well as develop an FAQ page on the township's website. And if I could get a second or I can explain.
And do I have a second or for that? And deputy?
Your seconding? Discussion.
Thank you. And then we have the second or councillor town and go ahead.
Thank, my thanks to the deputy mayor. Yeah, I, I just, I'm sure it's not a surprise to, to anybody that. You know, recent, recent changes to, to the renewable energy vibrancy policy have been, have raised a stir on the island. I think it's really important that. That it be acknowledged that council is a democracy and decisions have been made and, and those decisions have been made. But I think there, there has been a significant amount of confusion generated and, and in an age of. Rapid communication and social media, sometimes misinformation doesn't help anybody. And it certainly doesn't always help council. And so my intent with this motion is simply to. To provide further opportunity for staff to, to, to present. The, the changes that have been made in a, in a public information sessions that, that will. And, and that a, I'm suggesting a frequently asked questions page on the township website under the renewable energy vibrancy policy. Potentially staff could present an alternative, but what it allows is it allows a mechanism whereby residents can directly ask. Ask questions with respect to, to what the changes are in the policy. So the intent of the motion is simply to. To allow further opportunity for residents to ask questions about what these changes have meant in councils' recent decisions. That was all.
Thank you. Second or any comment?
Just, just briefly, providing information is always good. Bad information is everywhere, so we have to get as much, as many facts out as we can. And if, if it opens an avenue for people to be able to get information, then I'm, I'm in agreement with that. And I guess even down to like tonight's decision with the last motion. There's now two committees instead of one committee, so people may have questions on something as simple as can I apply and where and which committee? The more information we can get out, the more facts we can get out to the public, the better.
Absolutely.
And whether it's a information session or other methods, I, I'm open to whatever, just to make sure they have the answers.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments on that follow-up motion? I'm seeing none. Oh, councillor porter, go ahead.
I just have a question. So when you say a public information session, are you meaning more than just a page of information on the website? Like, do you mean a Zoom meeting? Like, what, what is your vision of on that?
Yeah, my, 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 thank you for the question, councillor porter. My vision for that had been. Sort of something like the, 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 what gave me the, one of the ideas was the June twenty second. Meeting that's proposed for the infrastructure master plan, like it's just, it's, it's a meeting for the purpose of information. It's not. A, a meeting where council's making any decisions or anything like that. But, and again, making this recommendation now at committee of the whole to come to council gives staff to maybe come up with, with. So with, with an alternative, if that's not, not the best, the best way forward. But again, the intent of the motion and, and obviously the. The deputy mayor understands that intent as well is to just simply find a way to get answers to residents and get facts out there.
Okay, so it's not necessarily like a, a public meeting that would be held at a council meeting again. It's something. Other than that, but some sort of suggestion is what you're looking for from staff to how to do that. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. And I see the clerk's hand.
Yes, through, through the chair, a communications plan will, will be coming forward. We were just waiting to get the documents. To a point where we could, we, where they can be presented to council. So part of the report coming forward will have a communication plan. Outlined in there, which falls in line with what this resolution is basically outlining. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the, the resolution before us? Seeing none, back to mover for final. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any other follow-up motions? Seeing none, we are at adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? I'll come to the deputy seconded by councillor town then. Any comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? That is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.